Good morning. Welcome to those of you watching and to the candidates this morning. My name is Kristin Malone and I'm co-president of Legal Women Voters of Glen Allen along with Erica Nelson. Thank you for joining us for this District 89 School Board Candidates Forum. This year, there are four open school district board positions and six candidates on the ballot. Voters will cast for up to four, they'll cast a vote for up to four candidates. The Legal Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We encourage the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League works to increase understanding of the major public policy issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Although challenged by this pandemic, for the past 12 months, we have innovated and continued the League's mission of empowering voters and defending democracy, including hosting candidate forums this past fall. And we are pleased to host today's voter information events. The format is virtual, so we ask that candidates and viewers eliminate distractions and give the forum their undivided attention so they would be available to view this as an in-person event. Our moderator this morning is Barbara Young. Ms. Young is a member of the Legal Women Voters of the La Grange area. She is a partner in the Chicago Law Firm of Golan Christie and Taglia, where she practices in the area of business law, bankruptcy, and commercial litigation. Barbara is also an active member of many women's rights organizations. Welcome Barbara. Thank you so much for moderating this forum for us today.
Thank you Kristin. Good morning. It's an honor for me to be moderating today's Candidates Forum. I would like to begin by reviewing some of the League ground rules for candidate forums. All candidates have signed and returned the ground rules. These rules specify the format, time limits, and other rules related to conducting the forum. I will be responsible for enforcing these rules. The candidates will begin in alphabetical order with their opening statements. They will alternate the order in which they answer questions. And after the question portion of the forum, each candidate will have time for a closing statement. Each candidate will be given two minutes for their opening statements, one minute to respond to each question, and one minute for their closing statement. Their responses will be timed, as you will see on the screen. The questions have been gathered in advance from the public. A panel of experienced League members has reviewed the questions submitted and carefully screened them for appropriateness for this office and to avoid duplication. The event today is being recorded. The League claims copyright ownership of any recording or transcript of the forum. The forum will be posted in its entirety on the League's website, social media platforms, and the Illinois Voter Guide. Any other use of the forum recording requires the express written approval of the League. Audio and video must be broadcast unedited and in its entirety except by media reporting on the event. Finally, I want to emphasize how grateful we are to these candidates who are not only willing to serve in office but who have agreed to participate in this morning's forum. Now I'm asking the candidates, please start your video and turn on your audio. And we're going to begin with opening statements. And our first candidate this morning is Katie Benning. And as a reminder, you have two minutes. So welcome.
Good morning. Again, thank you for having us this Saturday morning. I am so excited to be here and to share my opinions and views and why I think that you should vote and cast your vote for me. First, I want to say vote locally is very important. And I want to make sure that at the end of the day, voting for your local school board or your county representatives or your township representatives is so important. So please get out there and vote. I have been a member of Glen Allen for four years. My family relocated here from out of state. I have two children in the school district, both at Briar Glen School, one in fourth grade and one in first grade. My husband and I are also foster parents and help develop relationships with helping parents who are struggling get reunited with their children. My professional experience involves over 15 years of executive leadership and financial services and essential frontline workers. So I have had that experience through the pandemic managing and making decisions that have helped maintain that banks stay open and we do protect our employees at the same time as well as our customers. Why am I running? I'm running because I really think that we need to have community involvement that is someone that is going to help the recovery of the post-pandemic. We are starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel. And I want to make sure that that future, when those children go back to school full-time, that we are giving them the resources they need to be successful. I believe that we really need to be focused on the mental health of the children as they return, as well as the teachers, as they have all experienced individual traumas, being at home for extended period of time, lack of socialization, and making sure that we are building resilient children for the future and the next generation. I also think that I want transparency in the community. When we make decisions, we need to explain the why behind. And then finally fiscal responsibility, where are taxpayers' money going? Thank you.
Thank you. Now I invite candidate Kemp to make her opening statement.
Hi. Good morning. Thank you for hosting. I'm Donna Kemp, a mom of two at Parkview with my youngest in first grade. And like many parents, we moved here for the high-rated schools and teachers, knowing that our top dollar taxes would be the best education for our kids. And with my own background in teaching extensively in special ed, you know, I understand the joys and challenges that teachers face on a daily basis. And I recognize the enormous task that teachers have been dealing with in this pandemic and the world being turned on its side. And that's really what prompted me to want to be a voice for both parents and teachers. And I feel like with my background in business, that's helped me handle ups and downs, learn how to overcome obstacles, engage in problem solving, engage in critical thinking outside the box. Having been a Girl Scout and a three-sport athlete, I feel like that's instilled a team player attitude in me. And I've really learned to embrace different strengths that people bring to the table while at the same time working as a team towards a common goal. I understand the benefits of extracurricular activities for our kids. And you know, on my flyer cards or signs, you'll see my slogan, clarity, equity, and unity. And what I mean by clarity is really having a clear mission of serving 100% of our students with a full educational experience and parent choice. And for equity, that's really providing an equal opportunity for all our students to access a quality learning environment that's fair and impartial. And for unity, that's really just taking a unified approach to represent the public interests out there. We have taxpaying residents, we have parents, we have caretakers, we have community members that are really involved. And we need to do, represent that while collaborating with the other stakeholders of teachers and district administrators.
Thank you. And next, we'll hear from Jay Lurch. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. And thank you to Legal Women Voters for the invitation to this morning's forum. I believe it's important for the public to see and hear from the local candidates. The past four years has presented many challenges for our district. We addressed the school boundary issues and developed a solution based on the input from population experts, the community, families, staff, and the board. We now have a district without overcrowded classrooms. Then it was time to face the budget challenge. We used the same approach and fully engaged the community in the Yes For 89 referendum campaign. I joined others in the district community knocking on doors to get the vote out, and it passed. The district is now able to rebuild its fund balances and will be able to grow our programs well into the future. Now, we are in what I hope is the tail end of a pandemic. And the entire district community has really shown how resilient we are in the face of this very difficult time. The district will continue to follow the science and work hard to protect the health and safety of all the students, staff, and families with the goal of safely returning to all-day in-person learning. We all work together in this community. That's how we get things done now and moving forward. I am part of this community. I'm a parent of a wonderful fifth grader at Arbor View. I serve on the Arbor View Parent Teacher Council, and I'm a watchdog dad. I volunteer locally through my church, and I'll be an assistant coach on my son's baseball team this year. The D89 Board is recognized as one of the best in the area. On the school board, I'm an active and engaged member and have been part of the community engagement, the finance committee, the building committee, and the policy review committee. Thank you again for the Legal Women Voters for the opportunity to discuss my views on good school board governance and the amazing future of D89.
Okay. Now Stephen Newrout, I invite you to make your opening statement.
Hi. Also, thank you to Legal Women Voters for hosting the event. My wife and I moved here with our three kids almost five years ago because of our district's good schools. I have a fourth grader, a second grader, and a kindergartner. And I'm helping them all with remote learning while my wife works a full-time job and I run my own business. I know well how hard this past year has been. I am running because I want to make sure the board makes the right decisions so the district continues to be great through and after the pandemic. I'm a small business owner who creates business strategies for many different types of clients, from mental health counselors looking to grow their businesses to large aerospace defense contractors. I also have years of experience advising the government. I created government policy. I have negotiated large contracts, and I've overseen these contracts' operations. I learned about the district and its finances when I volunteered for the Citizens Advisory Council and Finance Committees. I learned about the community when I spoke with hundreds of community members and knocked on over 1,000 doors to keep our district's schools. It's great. I know how the district runs and I know how diverse the community is. I think the two components that make a school board member, that make a good school board member is understanding and experience. Board members have to understand how the board operates. They need to understand its relationship with the district. To understand the needs of the community that make up the district. And they need to understand that public education truly means equitably educating all of our students. Board members need to have experience with the district. They need to have experience setting strategy and policy. They need to have experience analyzing contracts and operations. And they need to know how to work with people to collaborate. And they need to have experience making adjustments with new information that's brought forward. A school board member does the same things I've done in my career, and I understand the community. I understand the district. I understand the board's role, and I'm running with this understanding and its experience to make sure the district and its award-winning board stays on track and continues its excellent academic track record.
And our next candidate, Heidi Nunez. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Heidi Nunez. I am currently serving as the District 89 Board Vice President. And I've had the honor of serving the board for the past six years. I was appointed to the position in 2015 and re-elected in 2017. And currently also serving as a member of the Policy Committee. And I truly enjoy that role as I feel strongly that policy is the voice of the board, and I enjoy that role. I too have three children in District 89. And as all of you and all of our viewers have been right along with you with dealing with the past year of uncertainty and changes and working through the different iterations of what education and life has looked like the past, the past year. I've had the pleasure, and I truly say pleasure, of working on, working with a strong board that's collaborative, with whom I trust, with my most precious assets as well, my children. I have complete trust in the way that we work together, the way that we make decisions. These are not just my opinions, of course. We have a really strong legacy of financial stability and being responsible with our community's resources and assets. We have great recognition for our strong governance. As was mentioned earlier, strong recognition of the way that the board governs itself and ensures that we are following the laws and the regulations as well as guidelines as well. It would be my honor and my pleasure to continue to serve on the board and continue on with the strong academic achievement and fiscal responsibility for which District 89 is known for. Thank you.
Okay. And our final candidate, Lavanya Sridhar. Welcome.
Thank you Barbara. Thanks, thank you to the Legal Women Voters for this opportunity. I just wanted to take this time to share a bit about myself. And as an incumbent, also some of the kind of journey I've been on on the board for the past three years to really deliver education for students. Briefly about myself, I have been in the community for the past 17 years. And I have one son who is a sophomore at Glenbard South and who has been a beneficiary of Awesome School District, right from preschool through elementary and middle school. And so for me, this is truly my thank you back to the community and really delivering and providing my kind of service back to the school district and in a thankful way. I've also been part of multiple boards in Glen Allen as part of Teen Parent Connection and the Glen Allen Juniors. And I totally dedicate myself to community. That's one key pillar of what I do. From a board perspective, as Jay and Heidi mentioned, we are a very strong collaborative, high-performing board. And I'm super thankful for the opportunity to be there. For me, my philosophy is for really empowering all the students, really ensuring that we recognize and optimize their potential. And I've really kept that as a value to really be a comprehensive, collaborative, and really keeping an eye on the changing landscape. So going forward, as if I'm re-elected, I will continue to really maintain the high standards of the board, think about all students, help the families and the community through the pandemic, and also ensure that we are maintaining the fiscal stability for a long-term, high-performing school district. So I really look forward to answering your questions and building my case for my candidacy for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move into the question and answer phase. And Donna, I'd ask you to unmute yourself. We're going to start with you. Number one, how will you solicit parental and community feedback? How often? And how will you use the information you receive if it conflicts with your own opinion?
Okay, thank you. As far as soliciting parent feedback, and you know, I view that as really engaging our community, right? Our community has very strong voices out there. We're a diverse community. So you know, everyone has differing views and opinions on what's the best way to handle something. But all of those opinions and views are valuable and valid. And I think, you know, one thing our district has done is surveys. But I feel like there needed to be a second part to that step. So getting handing out the surveys is one thing, but then the follow-up, making sure the follow-up and the actions that are taken are aligned with the results. If we do surveys, we need to make sure that the results are aligned with the actual results of those surveys. And I feel like there needs to be more of, more opportunities for communicating and engaging the community, whether that's a town hall-style type of meeting or just having our board meetings be more accessible where they can, questions can be answered.
Okay. Candidate Lurch, how will you solicit parental and community feedback? How often? How will you use it, even if it conflicts with your own opinion?
Well, I mean, the job of a school board candidate is to connect with the community. It reminds me of when we were doing the, the Yes For 89, because Steve's got it on as well, the Yes For 89, when we had the entire lunchroom at Glencrest was filled with parents who were concerned about, you know, the referendum and increase, the possible increase to their taxes. And so we got their feedback. We, we engaged experts. We engaged members of the community who didn't have kids in the district, we, all the families. And, and we really addressed everybody's concerns. And even if they didn't agree, you know, we, we had breakout rooms, we sat and we talked and we discussed. And we have an open mind. That's our job. That's the school board member's job, is to have an open mind and present the opinions of the people that are in the district and to kind of work with the other school board members and, and come to a consensus. That's, that's really what we do. We provide opinions, we discuss those options, and we come to a consensus.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Newrout, your thoughts?
So I think the district already does have several panels that parents and community members engage in and, and work together coming up with gathering everybody's input. So I'd like to see that continue. I was on a few of those boards. That's how I ended up going into the Finance Committee and the Community Engagement Group. And then ending up co-leading the Yes For 89 campaign. So I think you have to do it, you have to adjust how often you do it based on the needs at the time. And I think my opinion is, is only one of the many community members in, in, in the group community. So, so my opinion isn't, isn't as, as important as, as the group's input. And so I think there are things we can do. We need to explain things better a little bit, I think, to the community, maybe a dashboard like the one that District 200 has as far as the next steps for dealing with major issues like the pandemic.
Okay. Candidate Nunez, your thoughts on this issue?
Yes. Communication input and feedback is critical in all aspects of the, of the education operation here. And some of the things that I would strongly recommend is leveraging what we already do really well. We have some great strengths in communication and community involvement in the work that we do beyond compliance, right? Because the board operates in the public, and this is one of the ways that we solicit comment from the public. One of the things that we've done that has been really well accepted is to hold that virtually as well, which has been a great benefit to the public. But beyond compliance, there are a number of ways that parents and community can get involved and have been very involved in committees every time we have a new initiative coming on board, such as the referendum. We will have a, an upcoming strategic plan coming up. So there's always opportunities for parental involvement as well as direct communication over email to the administration and the board and getting involved in your, in your building as well.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Sridhar, your views on soliciting the views of the public?
I think it's very, very crucial. I cannot reiterate that we absolutely need community, parents, and staff. I almost look at all of them being really three key pillars of great student education and learning. So the administration staff, the board, the community, and the parents. I feel really proud that we have definitely kept every opportunity and every option open for different folks in the community and parents. And I've been myself part of multiple brainstorming sessions and open forums for people to provide their perspective. I think it is super critical, and as a board member, I will continue to push on driving that and ensuring that their voices are heard. And also just, I sit on the District Leadership Council, which is a combination of teachers and staff exactly to be listening and bringing their voice to the board and doing the same thing with parents. And I've been on many committees, right from the boundary change, financial, and also the strategic plan, to really hear the voices and bring it to the table.
Same question. Candidate Benning.
Yeah, I think that the district has done a good job of getting community involvement through parent committees. What I would say is we need to be more transparent of how to sign up for those, be more vocal in the newsletters, really have that front and center. I think we've seen in this pandemic, several community leaders, parents, teachers have opinions, and not everybody knows where they can go to be a part of the solution. So I would really advocate that we have our website and more newsletters of where you can sign up, where you can get involved, and how you can have your voices heard. I also think we should really have an importance on listening sessions with our teachers, given this pandemic, and making sure that they feel supported and ensuring that they stay with us for the long term. Finally, my opinion is not going to be my opinion. I'm here to serve the community. I currently voice the opinion of my 150 employees. That's what I would continue to do, is voice the opinion of my community, my parents, and the stakeholders that are involved.
Okay. And now we move on to the second question, beginning with candidate Lurch. How would you build positive relationships with the administration, union, parent committees, the PTA, the community, and your fellow board members?
Well, we really do have a strong system that's already in place where we, where we, where we have, like Law mentioned, we have the DLC, the Leadership Committee. And so we have direct communication through the superintendent to the school teachers. We have the, we have so many newsletters and the website is just, you know, anybody who thinks that, you know, the board isn't transparent can really just go right to the website and find literally everything we've ever done right there, all the way down to the last penny that we spent in the finances. So I mean, there really is a lot of transparency. We do have a lot of communication already. And I'd just like to continue that, that strong legacy of getting involved with the community and continuing that open communication.
Okay. Candidate Newrout, your thoughts on building relationships?
And so I think one major important is, important thing is that you have to build trust. And I think as people do engage with the district, as I did, that's, that's really where I built my trust in the district and knowing that, that they, they really do good things and making sure that the focus is on making sure the kids are safe and educated very well. So I would, I would build that trust. I want to build relationships by, by meeting with the different groups that you mentioned, listening to what they have to say, engaging with difficult conversations sometimes, and really documenting everybody's inputs so that it'd be useful for the rest of the board, for, for me to relay or for one of the other board members to relay that to me so that everybody really is on the same footing and, and has the same trust in, in the board and the district.
Okay, same question. Candidate Nunez.
Yes. We're a people organization, and whenever we're talking about people, relationships are important. And I think that this goes back to your previous question, right? How do you develop a strong relationship? And it begins with good communication. So making sure that we are sharing information in a regular way through newsletters, the website, and other communication avenues, but also having those avenues, as we discussed in the previous question, for information and feedback to flow up as well. I think one of the most important things that we've done as a, as a board is to make sure that we are providing all stakeholders an opportunity for communication, including our most important stakeholder, our students. So now having two student board members at the board provides us an additional opportunity to have more input, more feedback, and really ensuring that all of our stakeholders have the opportunity to share their input and develop even stronger relationships.
Okay. Candidate Sridhar, your thoughts?
Yeah, I definitely, I think my, one of my goals is the collaborative culture across all groups. And as Jay and Heidi had mentioned, you know, definitely we have achieved a really strong perspective from our board to engage every stakeholder, communicate as much as possible, and listen as much as possible, connecting with the PTCs, connecting with the community, different forums. And so I think we would want to continue that and really maintain that relationship. And I think it is critical. The trust is critical where people recognize and realize that whatever we do is for the long-term success of the board from a school perspective and for the students. At the end of the day, the board is as successful as what we drive to the students. So I think it is super important that we maintain that and we have, keep our listening ears on and continue to focus on what's right for all our students.
All right. Candidate Benning, your thoughts on building positive relationships?
Yeah, when you build a relationship, it really becomes the foundation is trust. And how to get trust is to do what you say. So if we're going to do something and we're going to be as a board and have our voice, we need to follow through with that. And if we have to change and adjust, as long as we've had to, the board has had to as the pandemic has gone along, we need to make sure that in our communication, we are explaining the why, the how behind the how this decision was made, so that all stakeholders, the teachers, the students, the parents, the community knows what we are doing and why. Besides just, and that's how you build trust, is do what you say. I also think a really important part of that is communication. And in communication, not only just newsletters, but really making sure that from a voice standpoint, there's regular communication that is easy to understand and that is equitable to all parties.
All right. And finally, candidate Kemp.
Yes. I think, you know, one of the main things is our core value, one of our-
Yes, I think, you know, one of the main things is our core value. One of our core values for the district is having that partnership with home, school, community. I think that's an area we need to focus on rebuilding and strengthening that. I I know from being a teacher that there's, you know, it's crucial to have our amazing teachers have their voice being heard And their input being validated. I know there's, you know, there's good and bad from being involved in a in a union. But we need to reach out and reach across and make sure we're handling That what's going on with that as well. We need to be involved with the the parent teacher committees. We need to, you know, be encouraging diverse discussions and dialogue, that constant communication. Being proactive problem solvers and not reactive and having that open outreach. You know, we formed committees, but really, how are these committees being formed? Are they open to all, anyone at all, or are they handpicked? And so I feel like we need to really make sure that we're giving access to everyone.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to question three and begin with candidate New Router. What is the most important issue facing District Eighty Nine?
Right now, the pandemic, I think. You know, when I first got involved with the the district, it was finances and making sure we had enough money to go forward. And I'm really happy now That we did pass that because we'd be in a really tough spot dealing with the pandemic if we hadn't. But I think right now, the pandemic and getting through it and getting focusing on getting all the kids back in school Like normal as soon as possible. And to me, that means it has to be safe for the kids and teachers. You have to adjust with new information. You can't just go forward. You have to listen to the teach the schools, the teachers and The kids, the parents, because each parent needs something different. So when you have a third of the district still not going into school for even a hybrid model, You have to listen to them and make sure that whatever you do is within your resources. And you make sure that you focus on things like mental health and kids' education throughout.
Okay, candidate Nunez, your thoughts on the most important issue?
Right now, we have an immediate and urgent need in front of us, which we will be responding to, are responding to. And we'll continue to work on in understanding what what fall will look like for all students. So this is You know, critical and urgent for us to focus on that right now. So I also want to share that My life's work and passion and what I've been really focused on here in District Eighty Nine is Access that we've talked about equity here, access equitable access to education and student success. And one of the things that we've been working on in District Eighty Nine as a result of the equity audit that we've been working on for the past couple of years Really is disaggregating where that what that achievement looks like. We are a high performing, high achieving school district and we Want to make sure that that achievement is equitably representative representative across all of our demographics. So beyond our urgent and critical needs, Equity and achievement is, in my opinion, our most critical issue.
Okay, and move to candidate Sridhar, your thoughts on the most important issue?
Yes, absolutely. And I think a few of the candidates ahead of before me had said it is Getting the students what they need to be successful during the pandemic and post pandemic. So I think we are definitely focusing on how we continue to provide The comprehensive education curriculum, so social emotional learning For all our students through the pandemic remote and students who are coming in for hybrid. And also while ensuring that we maintain our fiscal stability through this and And I think we have done with the referendum that was passed, we have the ability To provide the best in class curriculum for our students and Really getting them to be full, thinking about full students versus just their academic. I think that's been the focus and will be Will continue to be our focus going forward. And as we will be getting back on March twenty second, you know, we will definitely get the students back as best as we can. And then make sure that we get back full time in the fall, in the new school year.
All right, candidate Benning, what do you think?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing we really need to know is, first of all, the CDC has continued to change their guidelines. And I know that's frustrating to everyone, especially every industry out there. We're constantly have to change in education. But what I see is with these children, they need more time in school and they need a refocused on mental health. I think the one thing that we have learned from the pandemic, it's not all about academic achievement. It's making a well-rounded child and that next generation. So a focused renewed On not only social emotional learning, but are we testing and making sure that their mental health is tested like we are testing mathematics And reading? Are we using the resources out there to ensure that we are getting in front of the mental stability of our children? As well as the mental health that the teachers are coming back from. They've been asked to do two jobs, teach remote students and in person this year. That has been a lot of active stress. What have we done to support them and give them the resources they need To be successful, even going back into the fall?
Okay, candidate Kemp.
So I think there's 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 so many issues, right, that we could put in the forefront. And I we obviously know that teachers and students, they're they're the forefront in our mind and they're the forefront in who we want to take care of and address. And I I know this is a highly rated school district and we want to keep it that way. You know, I I know our superintendent is someone who believes that, you know, our our kids need to be challenged. They need to love learning. We need, but I feel like we need to reinvigorate that love for learning because I feel like the disruptive to the disruption to their Learning time has kind of allowed things to dip in that area. And, you know, we want to encourage our kids to think outside the box, to understand that it's okay to take risks. I feel like our our school has done a good job. We have five to six layers of mitigation. We can, I believe, we can safely return to 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 in-person instruction. I really want to push for that full educational experience. And I know that there are more than just a few reasons why people have chosen to do full remote. And I think it goes
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We got to move on. Candidate Lurch, what do you think is the most important issue facing the district?
You know, when I when I heard this question and then I I realized Heidi was going to go in front of me. This happens all the time in board meetings where she says exactly what I'm thinking. And so it happens all the time. Of course, we have to address the pandemic. We're on the tail end of it. So we've got so we've we've done so much hard work. And I believe in the fall, we'll be able to safely get those families back in school who choose to do so. But but moving forward, I mean, every time we have a hurdle, we get over it. We can't just look at that hurdle and 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 deal with that. We have to go forward. That's why in the middle of this pandemic, we had an equity on it, you know. Our teachers aren't representative of the community. And we need to do a better job of making sure that we hire more teachers who look like our students in the class. And 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 in the leadership. And so I think that's the next thing that's going to be important. We're going to get past the pandemic. We need to work on the equity and making sure that the staff and the leadership in the district represent the community.
All right, thank you. Now we're going to move on to the next question, beginning with candidate Nunez. How will you personally be transparent to all stakeholders within the community?
Great. Well, exactly the way I've been performing the past six years. First of all, staying true to the core values, the mission and the strategic plan that we've set forth with the community. Establishing those goals, making those public and available and including the community in that i- in those decision-making Processes to set those goals. Also continuing to lead with integrity. As I mentioned before, the policy Is the voice of the board, so making sure that we're consistent with the policies and the core values that we've set forth From the from the beginning and making sure that we're sharing information in a timely fashion and ensuring that we're reaching out For feedback on those important issues that we're working on in the moment.
Okay, candidate Sridhar, your thoughts on transparency?
Absolutely. I think it's a it's a core tenant of the board and, you know, I definitely believe that we will continue that. And I think through the pandemic, we have learned that we need to continue to push that And really share all our decision-making. And we've done, I think, a pretty good job of really putting All the information, everything we have collected and, you know, for the community to look at, the parents to look at. And also I think transparency is also for me as being a board member, really asking those Questions that we have heard, if that has not been put out and being really responsible about that. So I I do believe transparency is a core tenant. It's a core value and, you know, we'll continue to do that board at the board meeting. But also, you know, as we connect with various community members, listening And bringing those questions back to the board and back to the district leadership.
Okay, thank you, candidate Benning. How will you personally be transparent to all the stakeholders?
Yeah, I think transparency is such a crucial key in building trust with the community, with the stakeholders, with the union. I believe we can do that when we start to we listen more and talk less and having empathetic You leading with empathy through all of this and understanding everybody's coming from a different situation And being able to push that forward to be the voice of the community. That's how you get transparency. Also, again, the follow-through, right? Making sure that whatever we say we're going to do, we are executing on it. And making sure that's how you have a transparent and you know where everyone stands. Gaining the respect with listening to others and especially those teachers and the Community and making sure that, again, your personal opinion is not getting in the way of your role in your service.
Okay, candidate Kemp.
Yes, you know, our board meetings, they're they're open meetings to the public. But I would like to see them be more accessible because, as I mentioned before, you know, parents can show up and express In a statement format what they're concerned about or what they're worried about or what's important to their own personal values And for their family. And it's not, there's no way for them to get their questions answered. And there are meeting minutes posted. Our our district has always done a wonderful job at that. But I feel like there could also be a better summary of what was discussed and what was finalized As a result of those meetings being held. So I want to see more accessibility, more of an open dialogue, More of active listening, more proactive mindset. So all of these things are what I'm looking to, you know, incorporate or help find a way I want to meet in the middle, work on that common ground And really have a true sense of collaboration so that we are accurately representing our diverse communities.
Okay, candidate Lurch, your thoughts on this?
So when you when you talk about personal transparency, I really believe that it comes down to being involved in the community, being a member, being accessible. You know, I volunteer as a watchdog dad, so I get to spend a day in the school, helping All the different classrooms with the teachers. I I get to do a lot of reading and checking tests. But the unique position I get as a member of the board is that they also get to go And and read to the kids sometimes in the schools, of course, before the pandemic. But being accessible, you know, I I'm volunteering this year as an assistant baseball coach On my son's baseball team. So you have to be out there. You have to be accessible. You have to be involved. And you have to talk to people, and that's what I'm good at.
Okay, candidate New Router.
So I think one thing to keep in mind, and it's it's difficult to to do as a board member, but You know, there are specific rules for that all board, all school boards need to follow and it's and it's based in legal For legal reasons. So so I understand, you know, the push for transparency, but not But you you have to think about it in that context, you know, you can only share what's legally, what you can legally share. So I think for transparency, meeting with the teachers and the PTCs and the community more would help with that. Making sure information on the website and maybe even describing the process of decision-making and Making sure that's on the on the website. I think that would help as well To to ensure people trust that the school district is being transparent, which they already are.
All right, now we're going to move to the next question, beginning with candidate Sridhar. How soon should all students return to school full time? What specific challenges are there in having the students return to school full time in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two? And give examples of how you would address these challenges.
Absolutely. I see three three different questions in there, Barbara. So let me try to break them down, each of them. I I think your question, I'm assuming when you say twenty twenty one, twenty two, it's for the fall school district, correct? Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. I think that it is critical. I think we we are already starting the journey coming, getting our students back in, you know, starting March twenty second. And like I said, we truly believe that we've been watching the CDC guidelines. We've been listening to the community, the parents, and we all believe that, you know, coming back and giving them, getting us back is definitely important. The challenges will be around the vaccinations and getting community safety in mind and the teachers' health and safety in mind. And also making sure that the students are able to come back and be consistent, right? So I think why we make all these decisions that we want to keep consistent education for our students, we don't want to be pulling. So I would see those are my challenges if ensuring that everybody is vaccinated, the community is safe. And the students, you know, there's clarity of them coming back full time and staying that way for a long period of time.
All right, candidate Benny.
Yeah, the CDC guidelines and state guidelines have just changed from six feet to three feet. We I think we saw the announcement yesterday that District Eighty Seven, the high school, is going back on April fifth, full day, five days a week. I know that eighty-five percent of our teachers are fully vaccinated at this point. I know that we spent the money on the ventilation systems. We have the UV cleaning systems. We have a school nurse in every School. We have all the resources available. I believe the kids are ready to go back and they should go back now. I think that we didn't know what we were up against, but now that the studies have come out, whether it be from Harvard, Multiple thousands of school districts around the country, our children deserve that option at this point to come back, knowing that we have protected our staff. We have put together a plan of metrics in the summertime to be ready for it, and we should be of that option. The people that want to stay home and they want to protect their kids because they have elderly or whatever their circumstances are, they should still have the option to be full remote As well as just come in the video.
Candidate Kemp.
Yes, so this is an important question, I think, to many, many parents right now. How soon our kids should return to to full time? I believe as soon as possible, the sooner the better. I was hoping for right, you know, right now and even right after spring break. We we are increasing our hours by two hours, but I feel like there are enough, again, there are enough Layers of mitigation in place. The numbers have been dropping. You know, all of these things are looking favorable. There are plenty of schools around us in our in our very nearby districts that have gone back to full day. And so we we have the things in place, I think, I feel, to handle More kids being back and and having that full experience. And I know that, you know, mental health has been seriously on the rise. There are some staggering statistics out there of kids You know, struggling and it's more, it's more than just mental health. It's also struggling with anxiety and depression, all of that. And I know we we can handle this together.
Great, candidate Lurch.
Thank you for the question. It it's important because we all want kids to go back to school. I mean, you know, I work full time, my wife works full time like everybody else. Our kids need to be in school. We've done some great things on the board. I was in the group that talked about the testing that we started. You know, we have surveillance testing now. We have We've made it available for the teachers to be vaccinated. So We're going to continue with the mitigations that we've got. We've done testing in order to make It possible for, you know, return to normalcy. What it was before, we have to make people comfortable with sending their kids back to school. So we have to continue the testing. We have to continue the mitigation and we have to be open with our communication To make sure that those families who are choosing To keep their kids home now feel more comfortable sending them back so we can get back to all day in person like like everybody wants.
Candidate New Router, your thoughts?
So the short answer is as soon as possible. Like like we know, everybody knows, new new guidance comes out all the time. We do need stability for the kids' education. I know my kids can't go back and forth With different plans, so we need to do it smartly and methodically. So I think as soon as we can open up full day, five days, even for some With our resources and with the district size and everything, then do it. I know this district cannot, though, with a third of the students not coming back yet, even for hybrid. These parents, they don't want their kids back yet, despite our district vastly out are performing other districts in terms of terms of safety. So we need to build that trust. So we need to build that trust through communicating with parents so that they know exactly how safe it is to go back. And so they can make an informed choice and then hopefully they'll find it is safe. And then send their kids back as much as possible and we can do it with the resources we have.
Candidate Nunez.
I think there's no question from anybody that's here on this panel or in our community that we know that teachers and students belong in the classroom, that's without question. The real question is how, how and when that happens and while we're highly, highly encouraged. With the new guidelines that are out, these are the reasons why we have switched to a more expanded in-person. Learning opportunity beginning March 22nd in response to those guidelines and the the. Relax mitigations that we saw coming down the pike, so we are pleased to be able to do that. I think what is important to remember is that although this seems like an incredibly simple. Issue here, it's not as easy as just flipping the switch and transitioning from one modality to another. There's an incredible amount of planning and effort and things to consider. In making any kind of transition, it affects every single stakeholder that we have in place here. And it requires a lot of work and thought on capacity. On being consistent with what we said we were going to do, having a consistent educational environment and making sure that 100% of our students are being supported.
We're going to have to move on, but thank you. All right, next question, and it is similar but a little bit different. So we're going to begin with candidate Benning. Throughout the pandemic, the health professionals such as the CDC and IDPH have updated their guidance. As a board member, how would you decide when to follow their guidance? And when to forego the recommendations in order to move towards school as normal?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is they are the health professionals. I am not a health professional, I am not a scientist. I'm going to follow the science that is involved. And I think the research and the studies have shown it's more impactful for children to be back in school on a regular basis. And extended hours than it is for them to be remote. So again, we're always going to follow the science. When would I not follow the science? That's putting my opinion and my personal opinion above the science, which is one thing I will not do. I think that there wasn't research when we were making decisions nine months ago, and that's not the fault of the board. I think more and more studies are coming out on a regular basis and I think we just need to act sooner with those studies. To make sure that we are at the forefront of education rather than reactive.
All right, candidate Kemp, when would you forego the recommendations of the experts to move towards school as normal?
Well, I think it was initially said, how would we decide to follow the the guidance? And I do believe it is important to follow all the guidance to the best of our, to the best extent possible. And to keep in mind that this is guidance put forth and it is not mandate. So we, everything I I believe, if we're being critical thinking and thinking outside the box. We have to be willing to to understand that there's a give and take, right? We're going to follow the guidance to the best of our, to the best extent possible, we have safety mitigations in place. But I think it's so important to address the pressing issue of that kids are suffering right now. There are kids, there are, you can look at that there's a third people who are still in full remote, but there's a multitude of reasons why that exists. Some couldn't handle the severe reduction in learning time being dropped to two hours and 15 minutes. And so, and people needed that, some people, parents are essential workers, they had to have something constant in place. To to care for their kids and there are people who had lost money in the shutdown, so they didn't have the resource.
Thank you. Candidate Lurch.
So I don't really believe that there is a time where you can ignore the experts. In the district, we have always followed the advice of the the health experts in in this case, you know, in the other. In the other situations that we had to deal with, we we dealt with the population experts and the financial experts, and in this case, it's the health experts. So we always refer, we always defer to the information provided by experts. Now, even among the experts, they have differing opinions. But we we are always going to protect the health and safety of our students, staff and the community in this district. And if it means that we wait a little bit longer before we ease up our restrictions, then then that's the way it's going to be. Because that's what's safest and that's what's best practice to make sure that everybody is protected. You know, I'd love to send my my son back to school, you know, all day, five days a week, but it's not safe to do so. So and and, you know, I'm not going to roll the dice with with my family, I'm not going to roll the dice with anybody else's family.
All right, candidate New router, your thoughts?
Yeah, so I also don't think you can really. Ignore health professionals' advice during a pandemic. You had, and and CDC and IDPH, they they do provide guidance. But it's important to know that they, it's generalized because they cannot describe every situation. Each school difference, different, each district has different resources, they have different communities spread. So what we can do and what the district has already done is bring in local experts to help understand, build a local plan. So that we can continue to keep our kids safe. We have to and and then in order to help communities and the families feel safer about it, we have to communicate all maybe more options. That so that they know which ones are not chosen and why. And so that you can build that trust as to why we need to follow the experts' advice.
All right, candidate Nunez.
Yes, Jay and Steve, I think you you now have beat me to the punch, so. I I think it's important that the community knows that in, as a board member. There will never be a time in a global pandemic where I will ignore the the guidelines of a health expert. When the stakes are as high as they are in that kind of environment. As was mentioned earlier, I'm not going to gamble on 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 moving away from those guidelines. That's number one. Number two, I wanted to underscore that. What we have here in District 89, what we enjoy in terms of strong fiscal responsibility and high academic achievement. It's because your leadership values the guidelines, not just the requirements, not just the compliance. We we look at best practices and we look at the educational experts and otherwise. So that's a value, I think, that you have had in this current board and prior. And then where do you stop there? Where do you stop ignoring guidelines?
Thank you. Candidate Sridhar.
Yeah, thank you. I would definitely touch on similar thoughts that you heard from Heidi, Jay and Steve. But I want to really emphasize that one size does not fit all, absolutely, they are guidelines. But I think we need to make the right, mindful, meaningful, thoughtful decisions for our school district. And within our school district, every school has different requirements, so as we think about it. We've got to look at the guidelines and marry it to our, what we can achieve and what we can drive. Having said that, I am a believer in following the guidelines, in reviewing the guidelines and keeping that as our guide to drive our decisions. And I think the other point I will echo is we have to think about the health and safety of everybody involved in the educational process. And also what that has an impact on our community. So I think really keeping in mind holistically, I think is really critical in our decisions in following the guidelines. And we've done a really good job of ensuring where we look at the guidelines and where we make decisions relative to our schools.
Okay, now we're going to move away from discussing the pandemic and begin with candidate Kemp. What is your opinion of the security and safety measures in our schools? Are any changes needed?
Okay, so the security and safety measures of our schools, I mean, clearly, we, I I feel they've done a good job. They have, like I said, the five, if not six, layers of mitigation to ensure. You know, minimizing the risks that are out there and. You know, children have always felt safe coming to school. In fact, when, as a teacher, when we dealt with, you know, active shooter drills, one of the things we had to say to our students is schools are one of the safest places to be. Right? So that shouldn't change, you know, just because we're in a pandemic. I think that schools are a safe place to be. And in fact, for for people who have been struggling and maybe are on the lower income spectrum, you know. This is where they have received the most benefits and the most services is when they're in school, which is why I encourage. That fuller time, fuller experience of being in person and in instruction. So I feel like, you know, we need to get these kids back in school and the safety measures are there.
All right, candidate Lurch, your opinion on security and safety measures in the schools?
Security and safety measures, are you, I'm sorry, just for some clarification, are you talking about against the pandemic or in in?
No, I think this is a different question.
Okay, okay, so really. You know, when I was in school, we used to have tornado drills. It it really, it broke my heart in kindergarten when my son came home and told me that he had an active shooter drill. It really did. Our schools are safe, our schools are safe, I mean, they're, you know, the doors are double locked, you have to get buzzed in. You have to sign in a sheet, even if, you know, you go into every office, all the, all this. We've taken a lot of steps to make sure that in the construction of the school buildings themselves, that they are, that they are safe. At our review, you can come in and and there's that vestibule there and every door will lock if it's an emergency. You know, and it's the same in all the other schools, so, you know, unfortunately, the time that we live in. Requires that type of, that type of extreme lockdown situation, so I mean. You know, we're we're proactive in the district, we think ahead, we don't react to things when they happen and that's why we do live in such a safe district, so.
All right, thank you, candidate New router.
So, see, I, I, you know, I I don't like the the fact that the kids have to do active shooter drills. But the, but the the reality is that, you know, I I think it's necessary. And I think from what I understand, and I'm not an expert in this, but I, from what I've heard, the different ways they do it. It is appropriate for each age. And so as best it can be, I guess, so I haven't heard of anything, any reason to think the security or these types of. Drills are deficient in any way, but I am, you know, if I'm elected to be school board member. I'll be completely open to anyone who sees any problems and I take it extremely seriously. And I would do everything I can to make sure the kids are safe because that's, that's the first, that's the highest priority above even education. You can't go to school without feeling welcome and safe.
Okay, candidate Nunez, your views on security and safety measures in our schools?
Yes, in my opinion, before the pandemic, during the pandemic and after the pandemic, we know students can't learn and teachers can't teach unless they feel safe to do so. This is an important issue for the board and for myself personally. I can tell you, when I first joined the board, this is, this was a big conversation and making sure that we were going through and thinking through. The safety measures in each of the building, as Jay mentioned, double locking doors, what are the accessibility points and things like that? So I think one of the things that the community needs to know is that, you know, the prior board absolutely has taken a look at. Where we are in terms of safety for our students and our teachers in the buildings. It continues to be an important issue, I agree with the candidates here that this is a, an unfortunate period in our young children's lives where they have to go through this kind of preparation. And I I can tell you, you know, not just in our current times, but safety is important to me. Students can't learn, teachers can't teach, in a fire company, they don't feel safe to do so.
All right, candidate Sridhar.
Yeah, absolutely, again, building off what Heidi just said, it's super critical. I almost look at it as a foundational need for the children, teachers and the administrators to feel safe and secure. We, yes, we do have tough times where, you know, the kids have to go through shooter drill. But we really feel proud that from a fiscal perspective, we have definitely prioritized safety measures. The double door, the double locked doors, the vestibules or even cameras to really make sure that we have, you know, all the protection needed. And also I want to build on that we have built those community and I've always said community interaction is important. So we've got a really strong lead foundation and connections with our police department, with our different other, you know, safe, safety resources in the community. To really make sure that there is that conversations of the students and the teachers and the board with our community. And then lastly, I think beyond just physical safety, I think, you know, mental safety, mental, the feelingness is really important. And I think having social workers in schools, I think, has been another way of really giving that full rounded, physical, social, emotional.
Thank you. And lastly, candidate Benny. Hope you're muted.
My apologies. I put this question a little bit differently. I think we all know our schools are very physically safe. We hope our God, we never have to have an active shooter in our schools, but we, I think we know where they're protected. What this pandemic has done, and it breaks my heart, especially as a foster parent and as someone who's got call after call to take these children. These children have not been safe and I think we're naive to think just because we are in Glen Ellen and Beaton that there's not children suffering right now. From a mental and emotional and abuse state in their home environments, they aren't getting the meals. Several, we have so many children, 30% of our children getting free and reduced meals, that what if their parents aren't picking up those packages, right? They're still not getting fed. And what about the abuse that's happening, that the teachers were the number one reporters in abuse for families? And that is currently not being able to happen on a consistent basis. The statistics are staggering and I believe that this safety of the school is really the safety of the children. And that's one area that does concern me of why children need to be more in school because they is their outlet.
Okay, I'd like to try to squeeze in one more question. So, so yes, you have a minute, but if you could be brief, that would be great. So here's the the last question, what can District 89 do to move forward on diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives? And we begin with candidate Lurch.
So, you know, we just finished the equity audit and so one of the things we can do is try and farm. More diverse staff and leadership from those schools that are more like our community that we live in, you know. So I think, what is it, 80% of the teachers in the district are are white. And that's not representative of our community. And so we need to do a better job of recruiting teachers and principals and and leaders from other areas. To make it more diverse, that's how we get better.
All right, candidate New router.
So I think, you know, teachers need to understand differences of of each of the student groups in in our, in our district. We need to have students' voices heard more. We need to continue to try to reach out to the community members, specifically the parents. We need to have the parents and the teachers work together to to improve diversity, equity and inclusion. So a combination of factors that need needs to happen and a lot of it has to do with communication.
All right, candidate Nunez.
Yes, I, this is an area where I feel incredibly positive about the work that we're doing in District 89. I'll tell you that for the large part of my career, and I'm going to date myself here, over 20 years, I've been working on diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives across a number of different types of organizations. And I feel very strongly that District 89 is well positioned and has the essential elements in place to move initiatives forward. We've taken an incredible first step and the most important first step, and that is understanding ourselves with this diversity, this equity audit. That we initiated a few years ago and actually even prior to that, we were already looking at disaggregating our achievement data and taking a look at which populations we. Need to be providing additional intervention or prevention measures for. So that's number one, is really understanding where the need is. And I think the next thing that we have in place that's going to drive success measures forward is the commitment. From leadership administration and and all stakeholders across the board, teachers, principals, et cetera. Where they're all committed to seeing some of the change that is identified in the diversity audit, so I think that's where we are and I feel good about it.
Okay, and candidate Sridhar.
Yeah, absolutely, I think it's a really critical topic, it was always a critical topic before the pandemic, but I think during the pandemic too, I think. Diversity and equity is definitely a key pillar for us moving forward. As Jay and Heidi mentioned, the equity audit is a one step to really unlocking. What are some of our gaps that we need to really address? And I I do believe that I think we are moving in the right direction, we really got all the right resources to push that. And I'm fully as a board member supportive of it in the past and will continue to do that to really get. Empowering students, teachers and the community from an equity and diversity perspective.
Thank you. Candidate Benny.
Yeah, I'm really proud that the district was proactive and in doing an equity report. And using the numbers and datas to drive an action plan, making sure that we follow through with that action plan. We need to, again, recruit, cast a wider net and we need the support of the community to. and we need the support of the community to recruit more diverse teachers. It doesn't just take the administration, it takes everyone to do that. I also think we need to make sure that we are educating our teachers on celebrating cultural differences and making sure that our children can bring their authentic selves to school every single day. That builds confidence in our children, our generation. It also helps build resilience with them when they know that they can be trusted and supported and bring their differences. It also helps this next generation understand each other's differences so that they can respect each other more. And I think our district is on the right path.
And finally, candidate Kemp?
Yes, you know, one of the main things that we were encouraged by moving here is that there was a diverse community, that there's all walks of life here with different backgrounds. And I like to echo what Katie said, we need to be celebrating those diverse cultures. We need to be committed to engaging those different voices. That's, that's to me what diversity is about. And I think with equity, I don't, I believe it's important, but I want to be clear that it's not about treating some people differently in order to ensure that the opportunity is the same for others. It's not a zero sum game, you know, to try and rebalance the scale, I believe, in elevating every child, but not at the expense of another. And I want, I want to see us have those rich experiences and celebrating that, that, that diversity. And I think that can be done, you know, one of the, if low income families are, I feel have been really hard hit in this pandemic. And so how have we been doing? Where's our outreach and surveying how those kids are doing right now? That's to me tapping.
I gotta cut you off, but thank you. So, so I want to thank all the candidates for answering our questions. Now we're going to move into the closing statements. I remind you that you each have one minute, and we're going to begin with candidate, no router?
I'm running to keep our schools great and ensure all kids, all kids are getting the best education they can with the resources in our, our community gives them. I know how to do this. I've done this for years in my career. I also know the district. I know the community. I know the balance we need to make between the community, the district and each family's needs. I have the skills to help achieve this balance. To do this, I will focus my efforts on making sure the district has the direction and resources so kids, teachers, district staff can go back to school safely. I will make sure the district continues its excellent academic achievement and continues its progress on making kids feel, feel welcome through diversity, equity and inclusion efforts. I will make sure that the district continues to be fiscally responsible. I will make sure that the district is clear about these topics so parents are informed what is happening in our schools. And again, I'm Stephen, no router, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And next closing statement, candidate Nunez?
Yes, it's been my honor to serve the, on the District 89 Board of Education for the past six years. And I'm running for reelection today for the same reason that I volunteered six years ago. Service is important to me, particularly in the community where I'm living and raising my family. It would be my honor to continue to serve on the board again for the next four years and continue to fulfill, in fulfillment of the district's mission to empower all learners to recognize and optimize their full potential. I feel strongly that my experience over the past six years and being involved in the decision-making over the past year in particular will be assets and moving us forward to the 2021, 2022 school year and beyond. And I want, I think that in me, you can continue to count on a leader that leads with integrity, that is collaborative and understands the value of data and strong policy. I'm very encouraged in the groundswelling of support for local elections and civic engagement. And I want to encourage everybody to vote on April 6th, and please cast one of your four votes for Heidi Nunez.
Okay, closing statement, candidate Sridhar?
Thank you again, Barbara and the team for giving this opportunity for the forum. I appreciate it. As an incumbent, you know, we've all heard like the great work the board has been doing. I promised the community, the parents, that I will continue to bring kind of the, my service to the board, really driving kind of dependable, stable leadership, really ensuring that we are driving a comprehensive and continuous learning environment for our students and really making sure that we have fiscal stability, that we can really make sure that we are providing all the right education for the full student and really driving their full comprehensive and continuous learning. Again, I really appreciate the opportunity and as a local vote, please go vote for Lavinia Sridar on April 6th. And again, thank you for your support and look forward to serving on the board for another four years. Thank you.
All right, candidate Benning, your closing statement?
Yeah, thank you very much again for hosting this. I think this was a great forum. I feel very confident in even the other candidates, if they are elected, that we're going to have the strongest board that is going to represent our community. I am very excited for what the future holds. I think we've had some great conversation. I think that if I was elected and working with these board members, we would be able to collaborate. We'd be able to challenge each other in a healthy way. We'd also be able to drive transparency and communication trust within the community. I really want to just thank you guys for your time today. And I just wanted to say, get out there and vote. Our voices need to be heard. Our children deserve that. And I look forward to it. And have a great day.
Thank you. Candidate Kemp, your closing statement?
Yes, likewise, thank you to everyone for taking in this today. And I just want to reiterate, I'm Donna Kemp. I'm a child-centered advocate. I'm education-based, I'm business-minded, I'm family-focused and solution-oriented. And I really feel like my well-rounded experience and background has demonstrated my ability to represent our wide-ranging community voice, including the parents and teachers. I feel I've demonstrated my belief in public education, especially my teaching background, you know, with a focus on continued improvement and really my commitment to teamwork. I think that's important in collaborating with all of our stakeholders. I believe in our district's core values, the three that I want to emphasize are the partnership with home, school and community, really rebuilding that, are holding the high expectations for all our students, but also for all our stakeholders and really that high level of satisfaction that we seek out, I want to make sure that we are doing that and addressing the fact that there may be, being willing to look at, there may have been a dip in those satisfactions.
Okay, and our final word comes from candidate Lurch?
Thank you, Barbara, and thanks again to the League of Women Voters. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with everybody. It's nice to kind of see all the interest in our community. So it's encouraging, and I look forward to the next four years as a school board member. The reason I, I ran prior and I'm running again is because, you know, I see the quality education my son is getting from Arbor View Elementary. And I want to, I feel a responsibility to make sure that the other kids in the district can get that same level of, of high education. You know, the district's vision for excellence includes engaging in innovative problem solving, critical thinking and effective collaboration. And that's what we do on the board. We enable self-sufficiency, responsibility, accountability, and we encourage empathy, acceptance and self-efficiency. So, I mean, we really embrace the strengths in our differences as members of a global community. And that's what, you know, I think we have a strong board that, that, that meets a lot of that vision for excellence, and I'd like to continue with that. So I hope you'll vote for Lurch.
All right. So thank you, candidates. Your participation is now complete. Please stop your video. And our time is up for this morning's forum. I want to thank those of you who are either attending or watching it afterward, after it's recorded. We appreciate your participation, whether you're a candidate or a voter. For 100% nonpartisan election information, you can go to the illinoisvoterguide.org, which is powered by the League of Women Voters of Illinois, or visit the Glen Ellen League website, l w v g e dot org, where you'll find a recording of this forum. Please come back and join us on March 20th for our remaining candidate forums. And please do vote. It's essential to our freedom.